If the clerk could take the roll, please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Severajah.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ghamash. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the approval of our minutes from our November 14th County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
It's been moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Cordiak. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now today we have two items under Chair's remarks. First, we are pleased to recognize Zilla Way, a dedicated supporter of Anoka County's libraries, who was recently honored by the Minnesota Association of Library Friends. I'd like to ask Commissioner Ghamash, our library board liaison, to begin our recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anoka County's libraries are fortunate to have many volunteers, including our Friends of the Library, which is an all-volunteer organization that works to promote and support library programs and services. The Minnesota Association of Library Friends recently honored nineteen Stand Up For Standout Friends, volunteers whose dedication, creativity, and boundless energy help drive their organization forward. Included in this distinguished class is Zilla Way, from Anoka. Anoka County Library Director Maggie Snow is here to tell us more about Zilla and this prestigious award. Maggie?
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Maggie Snow, the Director of the Library, and I'm here today with Jackie Kramer, who is our Assistant Director and is our staff liaison to the Friends of the Library. And it is our great pleasure to honor Zilla Way as an outstanding friend for her many years of advocacy on behalf of the library. Friends of Anoka County Library is a nonprofit organization that plays an important role in our services. They volunteer their time and their talents to make our libraries stronger and our communities thrive. They foster a love of reading by hosting off-air events. They prepare adults for success by leading English-language conversation circles. They provide thousands of books for the personal collections of young readers every summer, and they raise funds for all of this through events and memberships to their organization. Since their inception, the Friends, with Zilla's help, have donated more than $54,000 for library services and programs. Zilla's love of reading and libraries developed early. Her mother was a librarian, but there was not a library in the small town where Zilla grew up. Zilla said, "When I moved to St. Paul, the public library was magical." When we settled in Anoka in 1952, the old Carnegie Library became a best friend to the family. Zilla has been a stalwart supporter of Anoka County Library in a range of capacities. She served on the Steering Committee that formed the Friends in 2002, and has served the group ever since in almost every executive leadership post. Current Friends Secretary Janet Eaton says, "With Zilla's fantastic background, she lends her valuable expertise, which she is always happy to share with other friends. All of us hold her in high esteem." Zilla recently retired from the Friends Board, but her impact is still felt. Her wisdom and her ability to identify core concerns has proven critical during decision-making times, and the next generation of Library Friends hopes to continue that example. Everyone is welcome to follow in Zilla's footsteps and be part of that next generation of library leaders by joining the Library Friends. And if membership is not your cup of tea, Friends accept donations all year round, but they also host a major fundraising event for us, and it is a mini-golf competition that will be held in March of 2018 at the Northtown Library. Information about membership and giving are available on the library's website. It is because of Zilla's membership and her giving of her time and her dedication to the library that she was recently recognized by the Minnesota Library Association as an outstanding library friend. And on behalf of the library board, and the staff of the library, and the Friends of the Anoka County Library, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Zilla for her service.
Thank you, everyone, and congratulations, Zilla. This is such a great opportunity to really celebrate the important work that you do, as well as the other people who are members of Friends of the Library, and all the wonderful volunteers who give of their time and talents within our library system, and by extension, really, our community as a whole. Again, congratulations for helping shine a spotlight on the incredible work that is done within our library system. So again, thank you so much, and congratulations, Zilla.
May I comment, ma'am Chair? You know, I've served over the years on the library board sometime. I recognize what libraries are, we all do. But the Friends group is always an important asset in our community, quite frankly. I think that with Zilla, you and your peers have done is very, very good. The organization's never exactly set itself on fire, but you've offered important resource and asset to our community, as many different library systems do. I wholly support your efforts, and I appreciate all that you've done in our library. It speaks well of libraries and our library system, quite frankly. I liken it a little bit to our parks. I mean, so many times, the citizens around any one of our given parks are our neighbors, and they're very much active in their own park system. Do the same thing in libraries, which is always an interesting place to be. It's a positive place to be. The public supports it readily. So whatever you're doing, whatever you've done, we certainly appreciate. I've watched it for years, and I thank you for your efforts, or you and your peers, because you've done a lot to help us, and we've always supported your cause. So hopefully, we find us beneficial throughout the future. Thank you again.
Right. Thank you so much. Again, congratulations. Our second item this morning is a report about a highly successful event that was held in Anoka County recently in recognition of National Apprenticeship Week. While college may be the answer for many people, it is not the answer for everyone, and is not the only way to land a great paying job in a very high-demand field. Apprenticeships are a way to meet the talent needs of employers in our area and help put local job seekers on a real path to success. So Nicole Swanson is here today, who is the Director of our Job Training Center, and she's going to tell us more. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Nicole Swanson, and I'm the Director of the Job Training Center, and I'm very excited to be in front of you today to talk about our highly-successful apprenticeship summit and hiring event that took place at the Anoka County Workforce Center on Wednesday, November 15th. The purpose of the event was to highlight National Apprenticeship Week, which was November 13th through the 19th, and the purpose was really twofold. It was to provide information to the community job seekers and career seekers about the great opportunities that apprenticeships have to really start that career path for individuals, and also to our local employers in our surrounding areas about a federal grant that the state of Minnesota has received to really increase the number of apprenticeships that are available in Anoka County and our surrounding areas. This Earn As You Work model really focuses on on-the-job training opportunities. It allows individuals to come out of high school to look for employment. It allows individuals with a certificate to look for employment, or a technical degree as well. And the exciting piece is, to my knowledge, we are the only workforce center in the state of Minnesota that held such an event the week of National Apprenticeship Week. We had, we were at capacity. We had over 25 employers there focused on apprenticeships and healthcare, which is a unique perspective. A lot of employers and community members don't realize that there are apprenticeships available in healthcare, so we had Fairview Health Services there. We had several manufacturers. We had EJ Ajax and Aggressive Hydraulics. We had XL Energy and Great River Energy, and also the Bricklayers Association. As I mentioned, we were at capacity. We had over 150 job seekers sign in, many more that didn't. It was standing room only. The exciting piece, when you do these events, you really never know how busy they're going to be, and when they're too busy, then, you know, you just focus on providing great service. But again, wanted to highlight that the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry highlighted the Minnesota Apprenticeship Initiative Grant. It's a grant through 2020 that offers 1,000 apprenticeships in the state of Minnesota. And they're focusing on a skills gap of 130,000 individuals in the state of Minnesota by 2020. So the fact that this opportunity is here not only for our career seekers, but our local employers, is a fantastic opportunity. Also, wanted to highlight Katie Neer. She's our program coordinator with the Job Training Center that coordinated the event. And we were very excited and wanted to present this proclamation to you on behalf of Governor Dayton, that he provided to us for the fact that we did this event. So if you do have additional information or questions that you'd like us to post on our website, we do have links available, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Katie, for your incredible work on pulling this together. It is so important when we look at, as you talked about, the skills gap and the recognition that we have a workforce shortage. College is not the right path for everyone, and I think the more that we can make sure that we provide information to parents, and letting them know that, you know, some of these opportunities within the classrooms in our high schools as well, whether it's, you know, the auto mechanics, or construction, or there's a whole host, the healthcare that you talked about. Great opportunity to really launch these students into a career path, and apprenticeship is just one more of those opportunities. So again, thank you so much for your great work, and congratulations for the recognition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment, I want to bring up, I had an opportunity to meet with Deed. Some people from Deed, I talked about our Workforce Center in Anoka County, and you wouldn't believe the smiles on their face and the way they beam that this is not just a model for the state, it's the only one in the state that functions like this, and very high-functioning. Really proud that Anoka County has that stature, and the fact that we put an apprentice fair like this out there to really move along the labor force. I mean, it's something we talk about a lot. You just don't see it in action a lot, and it was proven to me by the folks at Deed that we are top-notch, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
May I comment, ma'am Chair? And you can only guess that over the years, I've had many, many people come to me looking for a job, endless people, we all have probably, I fully expect that. But really, what they, you know, the marketplace is always changing. The needs of the employers are always different. People need to be looking for new opportunities, for changing opportunities, and they really don't always get that. They should be looking for things like you, and everyone should flock. The fact that you offer this opportunity is very good. Maybe there should be 20 of you, because there's certainly enough people there that could be building and growing their skills to move into a sector that, of the economy, whatever it is, that look, and I don't care if it's a bricklayer or whatever, you know, they need to create some talent there, and it's much better for their lives, we all know that, so whatever you're doing for them is greatly appreciated by them, I'm sure, and certainly a benefit to our community, because this board supports our employers. And you're doing exactly what we'd like to see you doing, so I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Now we will move on to Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first item is to, sorry, wrong place. We have new positions, four .6 FTE license center specialist grade nine positions to be added. And is, most everyone's heard about the MinLAR system that started recently and has been a huge problem all over the state of Minnesota. We have a lot of complaints because of the long times that people wait in line, or just getting their stuff accomplished. We have a high-volume pressure. It's constant, and it's causing negative effects to our customers and our staff, and the License Bureau is anticipating a few retirements in 2018. So we'd like to take this time to add these positions. They're .6 FTE license center specialist grade nine, and we are asking for, recommending four of those.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Look.
Just a question here. Reading through the packet, it says that this is going to be absorbed by the current budget, which is, I'm assuming is going to be part of the retirements, anticipated retirements. Is that the funding source for this, or is there additional monies in the budget that would be covering this?
I...
Madam Chair, well, generally, the license centers produce money. They support themselves through the business they do. So it will come from that, because what this is, filling the retirement spots. We're not waiting on those.
So Commissioner Look, I think to clarify, so number one, you'll get staff trained and ready for those retirement spots, but in addition to that, they do produce more revenue than what they are expending, and so they would absorb that within their current business model.
Madam Chair, I understand that part of it. I, um, I just wanted to see if it was anticipated money that would be vacated later on that would be funding this in an annual budget, or if it's current funds that are available, and I think that's been answered. I would like to make a comment, though, that, you know, whether it's the Affordable Care Act, where we had to hire an exceptional amount of people to fill those positions, or whether it's now the new MinLAR system, Affordable Care Act on the MinSure system, or MinLARs, I'm trying to remember all the acronyms here, it's just, it seems that we are continually, continually faced with this need to hire staff because of a state that produces systems that are, maybe ridiculous is a good name? I'm not sure. But it's, it's just, it, it just amazes me. It amazes me, the burden that the legislators put on the counties, who have to then respond with, I mean, we can't have our customers standing in these, in these endless lines forever, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna stand for that, and they shouldn't stand for that. That's not, that's not customer service, but we end up having to flood these areas with additional personnel in order to offset the reckless nature of these, these programs that are coming out of the state. I just, I, I don't find it acceptable, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Look, certainly agree with you. In fact, in MinSure, there were 21 positions that were added specifically in that area alone, and again, that is something that is kind of thrust upon the local level, and we have to respond, because frankly, our staff want to do a good job. They want to provide great customer service, but when these systems really tie their hands, it makes it very difficult for them within their working environment, and really, the only way for us to be able to assist is to add additional staffing in that area so that they can continue to do the best job that they possibly can in really, really difficult situations. So I certainly share your frustration. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify for the public watching. MinLARs is the Minnesota License and Registration System. So this is about your car licensing, and tabs, and driver's licenses, and the rest. I do want to clarify also, in my previous statement about Deed, Department of Employment and Economic Development. I know we throw around acronyms a lot, and we get them, we understand most of them, and the public isn't privy to all of them, so I thought I'd clear that up. But on the MinLARs front, and our license centers, I've been over there a couple of times in the last month, and the lines are long, but our staff is still friendly, still doing the job, and they're up against the gauntlet. The problem is, there is no light at the end of the tunnel. The state is admitting, "We haven't figured this out, we don't know what to do." They did relieve somebody of their position, the director of that division, or two people, and so hopefully, that turns around. Hopefully, we get somebody in there competent enough that they can make some executive decisions to fix the problem. But I'm told by every IT person I know, this is not an easy fix. They're too far down a dark alley to turn around and start over, so they have to fix what they've got, and it sounds like it's a long road to hoe. So with that being said, we're begging for the public's patience as you apply for your tabs and your licenses, and title transfers are probably the biggest problem right now. So just be patient, and I would tell you to rest assured, you're not going to get handcuffed and put in jail for tabs that are expired, but I'm not sure of that. I shouldn't go on record, so. But be patient and plan ahead.
Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I can't help but comment. I fully appreciate and understand your comment, Commissioner Look, and we understand that. And you and I have listened for years, the subject of unfunded mandates, which clearly drives Anoka County's budget over and over and over again. Now, you know, about 85% of what county does is guided and directed and ordered by the state of Minnesota. We are a creature, the state of Minnesota. We don't many times set our own policies, they set them for us. We simply follow their lead. So when those things happen, and those pitfalls occur, we end up, in some, quite frankly, in the end, saddling in some measure our county taxpayers, because we're obligated to discharge whatever the state of Minnesota orders, they're called unfunded mandates. We've been fighting with that for decades. I think we make responsible decisions as we approach those things, with budget coming before us right now, I feel that we have once again, but I think that sometimes we can't always control. Even your own legislative delegation will remind you that we're their creature, and they do what they have to do. I had to comment, ma'am Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I just read an article in the last few days that there's people that are in the middle of their title transfers, and their title is in possession of the state of Minnesota, so they're really concerned about when that's going to happen.
All right. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item within that?
The next item is, there are two positions, they're both vacant, .5 FTE Passport Acceptance Specialist Grade Nine. We're recommending that we eliminate one of those and expand the .5 FTE to a 1.0 FTE. And they're vacant, and they will be for the Coon Rapids Passport Center.
Okay, so basically, taking two half-time positions and making one full-time. All right?
We do it off, ma'am Chair, I'll move it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Madam Chair, the next item is an additional agenda item, and it's Resolution 2017-M7. It's establishing compensation in expense amounts for Anoka County employees, unclassified employees, appointed division managers, department heads, elected officials, and county commissioners, which are elected officials. So this is, there's a 0% general adjustment, but for those, those organizations mentioned, those employees mentioned, it will be a merit-based range movement of up to 3% effective January 6, 2018. The elected officials will also have a 3%, except for the county attorney, who is a zero increase. And all the pay increases for union employees are governed by their collective bargaining agreements.
Okay. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we'll move on. Okay, now we'll move on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee would recommend approval of a resolution accepting gifts received for the annual meddling volunteer recognition luncheon that was held on October 10th of
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it, Madam Chair.
Second.
And I would like to, if you don't, if you would allow me to, I'd like to read the donors to this event, starting with Dr. Blakesley Dental, Advanced Spinal Care, American Legion Post 334, Andover YMCA, Anoka Number 39, Disabled American Veterans Auxiliary, Columbia Heights VFW Post Number 230, Coon Rapids Veterans Post 9625, and their gambling division, the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 39, Family Foot and Ankle, Fridley, American Legion Post 303, they're listed twice there, so perhaps they donated twice, the John Keller DDS, Family Dentistry here in Anoka, Kraus Harding VFW 6587, Metropolitan Cardiology Consultants, Minnesota Urology, North Radiation Therapy, Schuler Shoes, and Suburban Radiological Consultants. Those are the folks that contributed money to allow the meddling volunteer luncheon to happen, and to make sure we could recommend, recognize those volunteers for their multiple hours of service.
All right. Thank you, and roll call vote?
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine for traffic signal painting at various locations. There are only three locations, I will read those. There are University Avenue and Trunk Highway 10 on the south ramp, University Avenue, Trunk Highway 10 on the north ramp, and Trunk Highway 65 at 93rd Avenue.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Um, move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
What in the world do we need a resolution of our attorney to paint our traffic signs? We've got 100 of them out. I'm just curious as to why this is coming before us today, not that early matters, but what drives this?
Madam Chair, these are a part of the city of Blaine's responsibility, so they're contracting with us to do it for them, seeing as we have a large program of painting, and they're saying, "Hey, these are ours, we don't want to contract somebody to do them, can you just do them in your program?" So it's a joint powers agreement for allowing us to do their work.
Okay, I get that. Is that unusual, because not every city does that, certainly.
Madam Chair, it's not that unusual, we've done it for other cities, and I know Coon Rapids has a program, and occasionally, we have to paint some of theirs for them, or are allowed to through the JPAs, so it's not unusual.
I get it. Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote?
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, there are a couple of informational items I'll point out to you. There's some increases in contracts, rather substantial increases in contracts for major road projects, but they fall within the 10% of the contract amount, so they can be done without board action. Therefore, they're informational, but I want to draw your attention to them. They were for expansions within the projects, they weren't for over just by contractors as much as they were just additional work within the projects. With that, that does conclude the transportation report.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on November 21st. We came away with three action items. The first of which is, the committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2017-F9 relating to extending the duration of the city of Coon Rapids Minnesota redevelopment tax increment financing district number 6-1. This is the Port Riverwalk Tiff District, and special legislation was adopted in 2017 allowing for this. This is an extension to that. Development has not occurred from, to this point as of yet, so there is no real cost to the county at all in terms of, in terms of extending this, as I'll remind people that Tiff districts are, whatever the land was prior to the Tiff District, taxes still are collected to that level for city and county and school. Anything above that, in terms of development, goes directly to the city to help pay for, you know, whatever infrastructure they put in the ground, for example, sewer, water, roads, or that, that sort of thing. or that, that sort of thing. So this is just helping the city of Coon Rapids facilitate this district and possibly encourage development.
Madam Chair, can I offer the resolution?
Resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just have a question. Commissioner Look, I was wondering, this says we're extending to 2038, what was the original one, how far was that going, do we know? I'm just kind of curious.
I don't.
Madam Chair, 2033, it's a five-year extension of the entire district. Thank you.
Right? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item.
Madam Chair, item number two is the committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2017-F10 authorizing conveyance of county property, the Head Start facility in the city of Coon Rapids. It is my understanding that on this item, number two, we need to postpone this for language change to come back possibly at the next meeting, so, Madam Chair, if it's an order, I would motion to postpone until the following meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries to postpone. Next item.
The third item, Madam Chair, is the county, the committee recommends the county board approve contract 0005989 with J.A. Dolson out of Minneapolis for the completion of the FAR Cottage 10 roof replacement at the Rum River Campus in an amount not to exceed $1,159,411. This is a roof, this is tuck pointing, gutters, and I'm not sure, I think that's, looking for a nod from Andrew, I think that's the, what, you know, the amount of work at this point to stabilize this building and to allow it to be usable for the next thirty-plus years.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I would just note, I believe this roof is like fifty years old, so definitely has outlived its useful life.
Madam Chair, just a couple of tangential comments. The roof is actually being lifted and insulation added and airspace added, so it'll become a much more functional building overall. And secondly, for the public certification, we, we've looked at this before, we've entertained it at the board and chose to table it so we can understand it better, really delved deep into, and asked our staff to dive deep into different ways we could do this, to save money and do this cheaper, and really just found out there is no way to do this properly cheaper. And we believe in doing things right, so that's why we're moving ahead the way we are. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a number of items on the consent agenda, and I would just comment that, you know, most of them are actually human service contract renewals, and so in order to continue purchasing services, we need to renew those contracts effective January 1st of 2018, and just want to commend our staff, George Burrell and others who worked very hard, these are all zero percent increases in contract, and so again, that's why it's on the consent agenda. So I would move the consent agenda unless someone wants to pull something out separately. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, oh, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Community Corrections, consider recommending the county board accept an Alternatives to Incarceration funding contract, C0006175, from the Minnesota Department of Corrections in amount of $160,000 through December 31, 2018. This is a community-based alternatives specialized supervision program, it's a pilot program, and we are actually the only ones in the state that were awarded funding to do this pilot program. Just recognizing that Minnesota has way more people incarcerated than most places across the country, and we are running out of prison space across the state of Minnesota, and so the Department of Corrections at the state level is looking for alternatives, and these are for more low-level offenders that, who frankly, continuing incarcerated probably isn't helpful to their success in reintegrating within society. So we are very proud of our staff for coming up with an opportunity to apply for this funding and really being the only ones in the entire state that were successful, based on what they put together, so looking forward to a great success with that, and this is accepting that funding, so I would move approval. Is there a second?
Second. Comment? Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, I wanted to thank Dylan for his work and his staff's work on getting this done. As Commissioner Severaja mentioned, we were the only ones to receive it, there were three other counties that attempted it and tried, and we were really the only ones that understood what they were looking for, that they were not looking for building, new buildings, they were looking to try to find new ways of helping people that should probably not necessarily be in prison at this point in time, nonviolent, folks who maybe have drug or alcohol issues or other issues that can be taken care of better outside of the system before they get placed in the system, and where sometimes they come out worse than what they went in. So I congratulate them, and I'm looking forward to that starting next year, and seeing what kind of success we might have, and maybe this pilot program can build the entire state, and we can do better things for people instead of incarcerating them in some cases, so, thank you.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is under Social Services to consider recommending the county board enter into contract C0006003 with the Anoka County Community Action Program for Childcare Assistance Case Management Services in an amount not to exceed $847,002. It's a four percent increase from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, and not to exceed $880,882 from January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. So the contract maximum over the two-year period is $1,727,884. Back in 1998, ACAP took over the administration, the supervision, and the staffing of this particular program, and between 2014 and 2017, they have seen the number of applications increase by twenty-four percent, yet we have not increased their contracts since 2014. So this increase in the contract is really a reflection of that, that huge increase in workload that they have as well. So I would move, I think I already moved that, right? I move approval? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
I abstain because I sit on ACAP's board.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The next item, under Behavioral Health, to consider recommending the county board accept a mental health crisis response funding contract C0005943 from the Minnesota Department of Human Services Mental Health Division in an amount of $363,920 from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. And this mental health grant is used for a full array of crisis services, which includes like the mobile mental health unit, response, psychiatry services, emergency medication vouchers, and those sorts of services, so I would move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye. Motion carries. And then finally, I will offer Resolution 2017 HS21 Economic Assistance Bills. And I've offered that resolution. It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Now we will move on to Intergovernmental Community Relations Committee report. Commissioner Brastad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we met on November 16th, and we have our list of our 2018 Anoka County Legislative Platform items. This is an annual process that the board goes through, we ask staff and others to provide input on things that we can bring to the legislature, things that might need to be changed, or new projects, so that's contained here. There's much discussion that happened at that meeting, we break it up into different divisions, items that we actively lobby for, and then items that we support with others. You'll see on the, on both of those lists, some of the items that have been on previous lists, a lot of the transportation projects that we've been working for, a lot of Highway 10 work, so that is what the IG Committee is recommending for the full board.
Is there a motion to approve?
I would move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms.?
Would it be appropriate if I just list these real quickly? I think we've got time, and I think it's important that the public know just what we're advocating for at the legislature this year. First, we're going to push for elimination of cost shifts to counties. We spent half our board meeting talking about cost shifts and how we deal with them, so the more we can advocate for that, the better. Clarification of self-employed income and asset welfare fraud, specialized caseloads to serve mentally ill, regional park capital improvement bonding, Lazard-Sams outdoor heritage allocation, and in transportation funding for US Highway 10 and 169, safety and mobility improvements through the city of Anoka, funding for county projects on all of the state highway trunk system operated by Minda, that would include Highway 65. Protect the current apportionment of the leased motor vehicle sales tax, that's important, and we'll have to work hard for that one, we know the obstacles there. Technical correction to the local road improvement project bonding legislation, I believe that has to do with the Columbus Project. And then just general fiscal disparities, again, we're advocating no change in fiscal disparities without comprehensive property tax reform. And then metropolitan council governance reform, that consumes a great deal of my time these days, and it's, it's important to all of our communities in Anoka County, important to the county itself. So, sorry to take so much time, I just thought it was, it was fair for the public to know exactly what we're working hard on and what we'll be putting our next six months into.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner. Now we'll move on to Property Records and Taxation Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Madam Chair, thank you. Janell, near by, Janell Sawyer, your director, she's stepping ahead, but I'll just comment in item number one, and the county board is always happy to see people considering repurchasing their property, they had lost it some time ago, I forget the duration of that, they're interested in stepping back into it, they pay all the penalties, taxes, and fees to bring themselves current, and they wish to require that, reacquire that property, I'd like to move it.
Okay, motion is, or second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll remind you, this is the chair's report, the agenda was brief, and I was allowed to handle it. Item number two, Madam Chair, I'll handle the first couple of them, each of them, in this case, it's a resolution, the first one's a Resolution A to the city of Blaine to acquire, to convey a tax forfeit piece of property for the purpose of stormwater, we're seeking a hundred dollars in value, which is a common standard, and if you can allow me, Madam Chair, the very same resolution in a joint property is also with Blaine, and also a hundred dollars, and also for stormwater improvements, I would...
Should we do all three of them?
Let's handle C separately, there's a bit of a story there, Madam Chair, and these are common in...
Okay, so two A and B has been moved by the...
I'd like to move that, Commissioner, I...
And so she's offered the resolutions for A and B. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next item.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I can comment on the last one, and I might ask Janell to comment, this was an interesting discussion that we've been having with the city of Lexington over on the east side, they are looking at an opportunity which they're rather excited about, it's a 116-unit complex that'd like to be built in their community, you probably haven't seen that kind of infrastructure in some kind, they've been working with the county, they need our support. Janell, can you just comment about what this action is about, how it might assist their cause?
Certainly, Madam Chair, members of the county board, my name is Janell Sawyer, Division Manager for Property Records and Taxation. This parcel, you may recall, a couple of months ago was a park property that the city of Lexington had purchased, and they were deeding it back to the state because they weren't currently using it as a developed park, and they anticipated this action today, which is to, to purchase the property as part of a larger rehabilitation effort in the area. This property itself is not blighted, but there's some blighted property in the area, and they are hoping to, to include this for some ponding for the development of possibly some low-income housing and redeveloping this kind of surrounding area. And I would offer the resolution, and I would just comment that not only will they be building a new facility, but rehabbing the existing facility that they own, and the investment in the area by the developer is between 12 and 15 million dollars, so it's a significant investment, which I think they are very excited about.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll just comment, I was pleased to work on this, happy to work with Steve Lexington, I know it's important to them, and so we are glad to be a part of that, I think we had an acceptable outcome, and everybody's happy with the direction they're finding, so I thank all of us for that. Thank you.
Thank you, and a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the remaining are information purposes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, and then we have Public Safety Committee report and a chair report as well. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee recommends acceptance and execution of contract C zero 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 six two zero three, the 2017 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred dollars for the development, maintenance, and improvement of a local emergency management programs with a term of January first, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item.
The committee recommends approval and execution of the state of Minnesota Human Trafficking Investigators Task Force Joint Powers Agreement to combat human trafficking and the sexual exploitation of children for a term of five years from the date of execution.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item.
The committee recommends adoption of resolution 2017-PS thirteen, accepting dedicated donation from American Bikers for Awareness, Training, and Education, is also known as ABAY, of Minnesota in the amount of five hundred dollars on behalf of the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and its K nine unit.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item.
The committee recommends adoption of resolution 2017-PS fourteen, accepting dedicated donation from Tammy Gimble of Gratitude Farms of a one-year supply of dog food for three of the Anoka County Sheriff's Office canines.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered, further discussion.
Madam Chair, I think it's pretty clear that our residents appreciate the canine services, so it's nice to get these donations.
And roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Motion carries, now on to the chair report.
The chair recommends approval of contract C zero 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 six two three zero, the management control agreement between the county of Anoka, acting on behalf of its Central Communications Department, and the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, and the law enforcement agencies, who are the part of the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council. This agreement will be in effect for five years from the date of execution.
Madam Chair.
Okay, should we get a motion first, and then we'll have discussion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Schulte.
Madam Chair, I just want to really boil this down to layman's terms. This is a management agreement between the county board, essentially, and all of our communities that are partners in the Joint Law Enforcement Council. The Joint Law Enforcement Council is being asked to oversee our nine-one-one communication center, our public safety answering point, from a very high level. This is being asked of us by the FBI and the BCA, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, here in Minnesota. It has been approved by the communities already, so we're, I believe, the last entity to sign off on this. Currently, there's a state law on the books that requires us to have a licensed peace officer oversee the public safety answering point. It's been a common practice in Anoka County, that that's not been our practice. Although our public safety answering point is very effective, one of the best in the state, very efficient, it just doesn't meet that federal law and state law. So with that, we've gotten permission from the FBI and the BCA to use this plan, where we have a multiple of agencies in our Joint Law Enforcement Council. And in that council is a smaller subgroup that formed the Central Communications Committee. That committee is chaired by the sheriff, and has a couple of police chiefs and a couple of county commissioners on that committee. So we will continue to have oversight over this contract, and over this agreement, excuse me, and over the public safety answering point. If something goes awry and this doesn't work out, we do have a sixty-day out clause, and we'll drop back to our current situation, in which we would then wrestle with how we implement the state law and stay within the confines of law and rule. But I do support this, I've been working on this along with Commissioner Brassad for two years or more to bring this to a conclusion. And I think this is, after a lot of work behind the scenes, I think this is as good as we can get.
Further discussion. And want to thank everyone who has been involved. This has been a lot of meetings, I know that, you know, Tony and Jerry and others have also been involved, as well as the sheriff, and so, and our law enforcement partners throughout the county as well have all been involved in numerous meetings with the BCA and so forth. So happy to finally be able to bring this forward. And further discussion. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner. Now we have a public hearing, and I'll turn it over to County Attorney Palumbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would then convene a public hearing to obtain comments from the public on an amendment to the Anoka County fee schedule. And at this point, I would call on Budget Director Patty Hetrick to address the board and the members of the public. Ms. Hetrick?
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. For the record, I am Patty Hetrick, Budget Director for Anoka County. Madam Chair and Commissioners, our list today is relatively short of changes to our current fee structure. As you know, we are required by Minnesota statute to keep the fees similar to the expenses that go into the fees. We can be lower, we could not be higher. These fees do reflect actual costs. Our first area is the parks area with the golf course. All of these fees are relatively minimal, from one to two dollars, and this is for nine and eighteen whole rounds. Our second area is Community Health Environmental Services. Their director has informed me that they have been reevaluating all their fees. They feel they're relatively low compared to the expenses. This has been confirmed by looking at other fees in the metro area. So we probably are going to see more of these, but today we're just talking about swimming pool license fees and food beverage license fees. Our third area is the highway. These prices are reflective of the commodity market. As you can see, salt is actually going down this year, and sand is slightly off. If you have any questions, we do have department staff here to answer them, otherwise I'll conclude that report.
Any questions by the board from Ms. Hetrick? Any questions? And it should be noted, Madam Clerk, that notice of this public hearing was published in November sixth, 2017. At this time, I would call on any members of the public to come forward and address the board on the matter relating to various fees. Any member of the public wish to come forward at this time? And I will ask a third time, any member of the public that wish to come forward at this time and address the board. Madam Chair, I see no members coming forward, so at this time, I would conclude the meeting and turn the matter back over to you.
Thank you. And with that, I will offer resolution 2017-136. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next public hearing, I will turn it over to County Attorney Palumbo.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would then convene another public hearing to obtain comments from the public on the enactment of an ordinance to administer and enforce riparian vegetated buffers. Madam Clerk, please note for the record that notice of this public hearing was published on November fourteenth and November twenty-first, 2017. At this time, Transportation Division Manager Doug Fisher will then address the board on the particulars of this proposed ordinance. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. Again, my name is Doug Fisher, I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. Minnesota's buffer law was signed into law by Governor Dayton in June of 2015, and was amended in April 2016, and further amended this past year, May of 2017. This law establishes perennial vegetation buffers of up to fifty feet along lakes, rivers, and streams, and buffers of sixteen and a half feet along ditches. The purpose of these buffers is to help filter out phosphorus, nitrogen, and sediment, and thus protecting and restoring water quality and healthy aquatic life, natural stream functions, and aquatic habitat. Under this law, the state soil and water conservation districts have the responsibility to review and monitor compliance with this law. They also have authority and expertise to work with landowners to determine what alternative practices may best fit their land and validate them if requested. Soil and water conservation districts will perform compliance reviews and will determine overall status of compliant or not compliant for each parcel adjacent to a public water or public ditch. On June twenty-seventh, 2017, the Anoka County Board of Commissioners passed resolution 2017-80, affirming the county's intent to carry out the enforcement provisions of buffer law. With this declaration, the county must include all public waters within its boundary that require a minimum of fifty-foot average, thirty-foot minimum width buffer, and all public drainage dishes within its boundary that require a sixteen and a half foot width buffer. Further, since none of our watershed districts in Anoka County elected enforcement responsibilities, the county must also carry out enforcement on all public drainage ditches within those boundaries, and those are the Coon Creek Watershed District and the Rice Creek Watershed District. In summary, the soil and water conservation districts in Anoka County, that's the Anoka Conservation District, are responsible for identifying compliance issues and working with the landowners. The county has a responsibility for enforcing administrative penalties against those landowners that do not come into compliance. So the ordinance before the public and the board today carries out those roles, identifies those roles and responsibilities that the county has in enforcing that law. I will say that on receipt, again, the soil and water, Anoka Conservation District will do the monitoring. They will inform us if there is an issue. Based on their notification of noncompliance, the county then will issue a landowner a corrective action notice. That notice includes a list of corrective actions needed. It'll provide a timeline for complying with the corrective action notice. It'll provide compliance standard against how we will judge compliance. It'll include a statement identifying if they fail to come into compliance, what those penalties may be. I will say that Anoka County has elected to use the minimum penalties allowed by law for these violations. For initial violations, there'll be a zero-dollar penalty for the first eleven months after the issuance of a corrective action notice. After eleven months, it'll be fifty dollars per parcel per month for the first six months after that, and then two hundred dollars per parcel per month for the six months following the first six months, or actually after seventeen months of the violation. For repeat violations, the penalty for the landowner will be two hundred dollars per parcel per day for a hundred and eighty days, and then five hundred dollars per parcel per day thereafter. And any penalty assessed under this section shall continue until the corrective action notice has been satisfied. So that's the outline of the enforcement parameters that are included in this ordinance. Public comments received to date, we have only received two comments, one from the Board of Water and Soil Resources, and one from the Anoka County, or the Anoka Conservation District. Both of these comments were advisory in nature, and we did have one technical correction that we had to make. We had to just remove a subdivision reference. Otherwise, they were just advisory in nature, and we have received no other written comments thus far.
Mr. Fisher, if I can, were those comments made in writing?
Yes, and I do have those that I can submit for the official record.
I think they should be submitted as part of the record, if you would, please.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Fisher, by the board? At this time, I would then call upon members of the public if they wish to come forward and address the board on this proposed ordinance. And is there any member of the public that wishes to come forward? And I'll ask a third time, any member of the public that wishes to come forward and address the board with comment about this proposed ordinance. I see none, Madam Chair, so at this time, I would then close the meeting and turn the matter back over to you.
Thank you. So I will move to consider ordinance 2017-1, the Anoka County Buffer Ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion.
Madam Chair, I would comment, this is rather anticlimactic for the many, many hours and days of meetings we've all spent through, spent on buffers. I've traveled the state with the association of Minnesota Counties. This is the number one topic in most counties. It doesn't affect us as much as it does some counties. This is really troublesome for a lot of them, and it's another unfunded mandate that they're struggling with. I shouldn't say unfunded, it's an underfunded mandate, because they will be sending us some money, but it's nowhere near enough to cover costs. With that said, it's a step towards clearing up water. The whole question is, is it a step too far? And we won't know that for some time.
Well, and our Soil and Water Conservation District has done a lot of the work so that really there will be very few issues that hopefully we will have to deal with, because they really have done most of the work as part of this legislation. And so we're very appreciative of their diligence as well. Further discussion.
Madam Chair. Thank you. I think we're doing the right thing here by bringing it to the county and having us be the acting agent or whatever, because instead of having it come from the state, we're closer to the landowners in our county. Commissioner Schulte's right, there's probably not a lot that are going to have big issues, maybe some in the more rural areas going up north a little bit. But at the same time, we have a better working relationship with those folks, because we know them, we're closer to them, and I think that works out better, that we're there to help as much as we possibly can to get through this if they do have any issues, so...
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. We have a number of committee appointments. The first is to consider reappointment of Walter Kleef to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, 2020. And Walter has been a member of the Northern Planning and Zoning Commission as well, so has some background experience there. Consider reappointing Melanie Keister, representing District Three, to the Library Board for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, 2020. Again, Melanie has served on the Library Board for a number of years. And then consider appointing Becky Rother as the Mental Health Representative to the Adult Mental Health Advisory Committee for a term ending November thirtieth, 2020. And she has a wealth of background experience working with people with disabilities as well as people who are experiencing mental health situations. Is there a motion to approve items eleven, A, B, and C?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. And if there's nothing else to come before the county board, it is adjourned.